I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great father of which stands one nation under God, in this world, with the justice for all.
I see DN up there. You better make sure.
I'm on.
Hi Deb.
Hi, hi everyone.
Can you hear us okay?
I can hear you really well today.
We're gonna check with Kevin to see if he can hear us as well.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, that sounds really good. Hey Kevin, could you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Kevin, okay, perfect. Hey, anytime if you guys can't hear us, the presenters have a handheld mic, so just send me a text message in, we'll, we'll switch because we want to make sure you hear everything loud and clear, okay? Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you for being here this evening. We are here to hear our presentation from Kelly Dunn, Assistant Superintendent Steve Sholan, Executive Director of Secondary, and Beth Dykman, Executive Director of Elementary on Goal Three of the Strategic Plan, Academically Prepared Critical Thinkers.
Well, good, yeah, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Dunn and Board of Directors. As Erin just said, we're here to share with you information around Goal Three, and I will be kicking it off, and then Beth and Steve will be joining me as we go through the presentation. So first, we just want to prep everyone around what are the measurements that we're using in Goal Three? So there are two parallel goals, one for fifth grade students and one for eighth grade students, and what they both look like is that by the year 2026, that eighty percent of our students will meet or exceed standard in both ELA and in mathematics, and we're measuring that on the SBA. So when you really look at that, there's four separate metrics that we're using to measure our progress in this goal. So one thing that we like to do is to figure out who are these students in the year 2026? So this is a graphic that we like to look at to help us plan. So if you look at that box with the number five on it, who are our fifth graders in the year 2026? If you just kind of follow that arrow backwards, that's this year's second graders. So we're paying careful attention to how are our second grade students performing, and then you can do the same thing with our goal in 2026 for monitoring eighth graders. Again, follow that arrow backwards, and that's this year's fifth graders. So two cohorts of students that we're following closely to make sure that we are reaching our goal by 2026. So in our strategic plan, everyone's seen our equity looks like statements, and so when I look at this, there's a few words in that statement that really pop out to me that you'll hear a lot about in tonight's presentation. So some words I want to bring your attention is rigorous curriculum, high-quality teaching or learning, and so this doesn't matter what kind of background a student comes to us with, whether they're a multilingual learner, whether they're receiving special services, whether they're highly capable. Every student should have access at every one of our buildings, no matter the teacher, no matter what the subject area is. So it's something like in the forefront of our mind as we do our work. So there's tons of policies connected to Goal Three, as you can imagine, and so how they're really listed in the 2000 series is they start off really broad with things around, you know, school improvement plans, how do we adopt curriculum? And then some of the other ones we've highlighted here are more around specific subgroups of students. So you can see that our multilingual learners are on there, our students who receive special services, services of five oh four and highly capable. And there's lots more policies that we could put up there that are really surrounding what we do for instruction for students each and every day. So this might look really familiar to you from Goal One, Instructional Services has a budget, and so what we've picked out are just some highlights from our English Language Arts portion and our Mathematics portion, because when you look at the numbers, they might look a little bit funny, and those change every year just based on the goals that we're working on in that area for both elementary and secondary. So again, you've heard some of this in Goal One. CKLA is our Core Knowledge Language Arts Curriculum for Elementary. We have consumables that students use, you know, their workbooks that we replace every single year. We're consistently revising our frameworks. We want our teachers to have the best roadmaps and guides all the time. We've done work this year in our highly capable classes and making sure that we have solid frameworks there as well. We have our task force that goes out and helps assess our students. We're always adding new curriculum to classrooms because we're growing. So sometimes it's adding a second grade classroom curriculum, it's adding a sixth grade, and again, that just varies from year to year based on, you know, pockets and levels of students. Professional learning is both for students and for educators, and then this year at elementary level, they've been focusing on writing or developing some writing units, so that's something new kind of that we're focusing on. Math is so similar. You'll notice there's an additional manipulatives, so at the elementary level, we might be purchasing counters or, you know, rulers, whatever, whatever support is needed for that classroom. And then at math, we've also done some work around intervention. So again, they're both pretty similar. We don't have big adoptions in either of those this school year, so budgets are pretty small. So to get you prepared for the rest of tonight, when you walk away, we really want the board to have a deep understanding of what does our promise to know, value, and support every student look like when we're talking about Goal Three, which is focused on academically preparing critical thinkers in our district. So one of the things we're going to talk about is the four pillars. That's really the foundation of everything that we do. No matter what the goal is, these are the four areas that will help to make sure that we're attending to all of the, all of the needs, that we're not missing something important. And so tonight, you're going to hear about the instructional core. This is about good teaching, good teaching practices. We're going to connect that to our assessment system so we know where our students performing, because when we know that, we can better support our students in giving them what they need to be successful. And so we'll do the same thing we've done in previous presentations. We're going to use those same four essential questions we use in our PLCs to kind of guide you through our process. So before we kick it off, we're just going to do a quick reminder on the four pillars. So this page is out of the strategic plan, probably looks very, very familiar to you. This is our goal-specific educational strategies. So pillar A is teaching and learning. It's going to be hard to miss teaching and learning coming up in this presentation, and I just highlighted one for each pillar just to give you a small highlight. So accessing poor curriculum is important for every single student, every classroom, every single day. And like I said, you'll hear that throughout the entire presentation. Pillar B, communication from families. It looks a little bit different when you go to Goal Three compared to Goal One. If you imagine you're a parent dropping off your kindergartner for the first time, you think about all those activities around, you know, making that kindergarten connection. And so this, you know, still evolves with parent conferences, you know, transitions such as from middle or elementary to middle school, middle school to high school. Schools are always doing different types of event, like the showcases that many of you have attended for elementary and at the high school level. And then it's individual building things like the anti-bullying night at Mountain View or the steam fair that just happened at Lake Ridge. So again, just trying to get the community in, being involved, know what's going on, so that they're, you know, proud supporters of what's happening in our schools. And their pillar C for professional learning, a lot of times people just think about teachers and what they're getting. So one thing we want to call out and hear is, yes, we use cycles of inquiry. It's so important to plan, look at our data, make adjustments for students, but in this one, we want to talk about the, or call out the professional learning that our principals are doing. So both at elementary, middle, and at high school, our principals are engaging in monthly data meetings. So they're, they're in their own professional learning, looking at what's happening at that building, you know, why are they getting that results? What's happening at my building? And so it's just another learning opportunity to help our principals grow and get better and get, you know, even better results in their building. And then pillar D is continuous improvement. Again, you probably, you know, think, well, that's really open into pillar C with what Kelly just talked about, and it is. Assessments is really important. It tells us where our students are and where we need to go. And so we're actually embarking on a new project this year around assessments. The Instructional Services team is partnering with Special Services, and we're coming up with a comprehensive assessment system. We want to make sure that we're not over-assessing students, under-assessing students. So if we're giving one, are we using it for its intended purpose and that we're able to do something with it? Our students do not need another test with data that we don't use. So that will be something exciting that we can come back and report to you on in our progress of what that looks like. So again, just want to highlight the pillars. So as we go through the presentation, we just want you to be aware of those and just to see the work that we're doing. So with that in a minute, pass it over to Steve.
All right, so next up, we want to talk about what is it that we need to know and be able to do? And so as we're talking about Goal Three and the success, as Kelly just outlined in grades three and five, it really relies on similar work that you heard in the presentation for Goal One. Knowing our students, and as Kelly was just saying, connecting, communicating effectively with our families. I would add to what Kelly was just saying. We just are on the heels of our curriculum nights for elementary families, and prior to that, we did high school curriculum nights, middle school do their nights in the fall. So, you know, ways that we're trying to draw the families in, make sure they understand and have an access point to what it is their kids will be learning throughout the year. And then again, effectively transitioning our students with the needs of students and teachers in mind as we do that work. So just a little recap, and again, connecting back a little bit to what we talked about in Goal One, is, you know, the work to understand students' abilities and academic needs is very similar. And the opportunity to engage in this through, you know, PLCs on a weekly basis is a systemic opportunity that we are just super fortunate to have in our district. You might recall Darla in the previous presentation talking about she had a colored document that outlines the priority standards for teachers at the different grade levels. And so linked on this page and for each of you at your table, we provided you with just a sample of an ELA and a math framework for eighth grade. And so for every one of the, you know, blue lines that you'll see on this document, it actually is a link to a supporting document that's available for teachers. As they go, they work their way through the curriculum, and for example, just recently, the school board has adopted the new US history curriculum. Tomorrow, we will begin with a team of high school teachers to start the work that'll take us through the end of the school year, developing the frameworks for teachers to follow beginning next year. So, so similar, but different, different in the format, different maybe in, in some of the complexity, but the, the resources are there as well. Lots and lots of courses, middle school and high school, and so it's just an ongoing body of work that we, we were doing, both in elementary and in secondary instructional services. Kelly spoke just, or mentioned the instructional core, and so I would just say that when we go about the work, we're, we're trying to rely on things, not just things that we think are going to work or guesses or hunches, we want to focus on what research shows has gotten proven results. And so when we talk about the instructional core, and for some of you, you're familiar with Elmore, and you know, what he talks about. But a lot of times, like what we might go about doing is, is trying to make a change without equal focus on all three. So are we talking about the teacher and what the training is that we've provided as well as what their content knowledge is? Are we also talking at the same time about what are we doing to ensure that the student's engagement is a focus of the work? And then also looking at the rigor that kids are being exposed to, what are the tasks that kids are being asked to do? If we're not focused on all three areas, then research shows that it's not going to be an effective change that we're trying to make. Again, continuing on with the instructional core, there are seven principles within the instructional core. We got four of them, you know, here on this slide. I'll draw your attention to the last one, which is the task predicts performance, and it's really a theme throughout what we're going to talk to you tonight. You know, what we're asking the kids to engage in is really important. What kind of level of thinking are we asking the kids to engage in? And so there's this one example that I want to share with you, and that is that if you ask me to peel vegetables, it's only to give me a small step towards becoming a competent cook. If you assign me to walk around the block daily, that'll never get me in shape to run a marathon. And if you give me worksheets and drills and lists of facts to remember, that isn't going to equip me to analyze demanding texts, build strong arguments from credible evidence, or tackle serious math and science challenges effectively. So we've really got to look at what the, you know, what it is that we're asking the kids to do, because those tasks that they're engaging in are going to predict the performance.
All right, so I'm just going to slide right over and piggyback right on that. So the marble jars are something that you've probably seen before, maybe you remember Lindsay Lombardo did something with this years back, but this comes directly from OSPI. And really what this does is, like Steve was talking about rigor and DOK level, depth of knowledge. So when you're looking at the SBA, it's designed with these three levels, the big marble being the difficult, moderate in the middle, and then the easy. And each of those represent a point value. So when you look at the actual SBA assessment, they have what they call claims. So ELA is broken up into four different claim areas, reading, writing, I can't remember the others, listening, speaking, thank you, listening and speaking. And so this would represent one student in their four areas. So as they're taking the assessment, they would maybe get, start with a difficult question or, and maybe they didn't answer it. So the next question would come to them would be a little bit less, maybe a moderate question, didn't answer it. Or they answered it, it was wrong. Then they would go down to an easier question, maybe a couple of easier questions, then it bounces back up. Let's try a more difficult question. And so that's what happens in there is that kids will get a variety of questions thrown at them, and depending on how they answer, that's how they fill up their marble jar. So when you look at, in the next slide, there's two students represented here, but two very different jars. Because as they fill up, they take the claims and pour them into each of these jars. You can see on the left, student A appears to have answered a lot of difficult questions. On the right, student B, you can see very few difficult questions, some moderate and the most easy. So point values, again, as you're filling up the jar, the kids, if you look at this, it's exactly thirty questions that they answered correctly. But you can see student B only is maybe not quite a level two, whereas student A was a level four. So the importance for us to be giving to our students right now, DOK level questions, to be able to challenge their thinking, get them to think critically. If we're sticking with our day-to-day work, only giving kids DOK level one questions, our kids are never going to be able to, when they take the assessment, move up the ladder to be able to answer the moderate and the, and the more difficult ones. So what we want to see with our kids is this on the SBA, but that means that on our day-to-day, the rigor, the depth of knowledge, we need to be increasing for our kids. So where are we now and how do we know? This is an example, which again, you've seen this before, this isn't something new, but this is the last five years of our SBA performances. What stands out? Well, obviously, we've been close. If you look at the top line in ELA, we were at seventy-five percent meeting standard in 2018, nineteen, that's close to the eighty percent. And then the next two years without any type of testing, any type of results. So we moved down in twenty-one, twenty-two to a sixty-four percent, and the same thing you see in math. You know, it is always, I want to say, we're always proud to be above the state. We know we can perform higher than that. So looking at, then breaking down the fifth grade assessment into the areas of multilingual, low-income, and special education, you can see that the, the end value, and the reason why the end value sometimes changes is it could be that a student wasn't there on the day, never did complete the testing, but you can see that for the multilingual, for twenty-nine there and thirty-three, there's a little bit difference in the end value, but the results are still comparison to what you see overall with SBSLD is that we are not performing at the level that we need to be performing. And in these areas, these are areas that we know that we need to improve on, again, going back to that DOK level, that rigor. So, lessons learned. Again, I think we shared a little bit of this before, but areas of strength in ELA in fifth grade were main idea, key, you know, key details. Areas for growth, really that writing piece, and it's, maybe you'll remember, we are working on our writing. We just finished two sections of our writing frameworks. We're really excited about it. By the end of the year, we'll be in the phase of rolling those out. Our teachers are very excited about that writing piece. The math, we've been doing some exciting things in math this year. I'm really looking forward to, really am looking forward to the SBA, because I know we're going to see a significant amount of growth. And we really do understand that, again, these are our fifth grade students. You saw back in the very beginning, these are the students we're passing on that by 2026 need to be at eighty percent. We want them at eighty percent now, so that that continues all the way through. So we need to build it strong.
All right, so carrying on with the graphic that Kelly first introduced you, what we've done here is, all right, second graders, they do not take the SBA. So what we've done is, we took last year's third grade scores and we applied them to this year's second grade cohort and said, what if, what if that was the starting point for this year's second graders, and then in third grade, if we could see them get, for example, in the area of ELA, if we could see them achieve that sixty-six point three percent, and in math, a sixty-nine point seven percent, that could put them on pace as a cohort to meet that eighty percent in ELA and math by 2026. So this is just another way to kind of visualize, not only who the cohort is that we're tracking, but also what would it look like to incrementally see improvement and achieve that eighty percent by fifth grade? Now taking a look at eighth grade, and I'll just be clear, the next four slides that you're going to see are really a repeat of what you saw and heard that discussing a moment ago. And, but now with just a focus on the eighth grade, the nice, nice thing is, is that we do have eighth grade, you know, scores to, to look at. Going back to 2017, but similar to what you saw from Beth, we have those gap years. So it's an incomplete data set really for us to, you know, look at and analyze. Similar to third grade observations, we've been close to eighty percent as a district, but we've not quite achieved that level, and certainly not last year. You know, last year's results across the state were certainly down, and summer school district was no different. And I want to add on to, when we take the district scores and we break down and we look at our multilingual performance as well as low-income and special ed, one thing I want to highlight is, is that in previous presentations to the school board, we've talked about where we have a gap with our graduation rate. And what we've said is that we have students who are identified as receiving special education and are multilingual, who are not graduating at the same rate as their peers, and when we layer on that they are low income, then we further, we see a further decline. And so I think that by not only looking at how are we doing as a grade level, but also then how is this, are those particular cohorts doing? It lets us to, lets us kind of, you know, shed more light on performance and track the growth going forward. Lot of, lot of lessons that are similar to what we saw with third grade. One thing I, I want to say is, it is not uncommon that when you sit down and you talk to teachers and you look at where were our areas of strength, maybe it was something that we emphasized or we really focused on. And so no surprise, we saw improvement in that. Maybe when we see an area of growth, we can quickly point to, oh yeah, that's something that we don't get to until the end of the year. And so moving forward, the challenge is, is how do we, how do we address the challenges but not lose any of the, you know, kind of the momentum that we've seen in those areas of strength as well? And then similar to what, what we did to try to kind of pace out the scores for the second to fifth grade. The nice thing for our, the fifth graders that we have right now, we do have data. How did they perform as fourth graders? Well, you can see sixty-eight point eight percent in ELA, great. That sends it, that's a much different trajectory to reach eighty percent for that cohort by eighth grade. And in math, sixty-point-three percent, and again, you can see kind of what does that look like for us to break it apart and track that cohort as we approach the eighth grade.
All right, so now that you've seen a snapshot of where we are at with our data, the next question is, is how are we going to get there? So I want you to think about this, that's a bowl down there, by the way, that kind of blue thing at the bottom, people thought it was a bathtub. So what, what we in our head is thinking is like, what do we need to do? We have all this information. How do we put it together so that our students are actually going to learn what they need to learn, perform how they need to perform so that we can, that they're graduating, right, ready to do whatever their heart desires? So it's really taking all of those things. How do we dump in that quality instruction in every classroom? Having those high-quality frameworks, answering those higher depth of knowledge questions, it's taking everything we know about research, right? But what's important is with that bowl, and this is goal two, and why goal two is so important. We're not going to get there unless we have solid foundations with our family, relationships with, with our students, so that every classroom is a safe and nurturing environment. So if you've got that bowl, right, it's all got to be contained in that. We're going to mix it all together, and that's what we say is the secret sauce. It's really about combining all of that work together around social, emotional safety, all of that, and that's what's going to allow our students to perform. And so again, I want to just remind you that the task predicts performance. Steve just talked to you about a race. How do you run a marathon if all you've done is walked around the block? He's going to take a little, take a little, little, little trip back in time, because this might date some of us. Okay, so how many of you remember taking an assessment that looked like this? You get a question, it's just a single multiple choice, you're just going to bubble one, maybe you had a fancy Scantron, and then they're all worth one point. Like, we've all done that, right? So that is not at all the task that our students are expected to do. So they probably wish that's what they have. So again, task predicts performance. So I don't know how many of you have actually dug in to see what an SBA looks like. So these are some sample of what the SBA calls their questions. You can notice number one up there, kids do get some multiple choice questions that just have one answer, like what we did as students. There's not many of those. So they get things like multiple choice questions that have multiple correct answers, and they have to get all of them correct to get the one point that that, that question has worked. There's all kinds of crazy matching tables that ask them to do different things in the tables. They've got, you know, just regular keyboarding entry types of questions. The drag and drop and hotspots, they're asked to click things on the computer, move them over, do all kinds of crazy stuff. And then again, there's other table fill-in, and if you think that that wasn't enough, I got another slide for you. They've got listening tasks where they have to listen to, listen to something and then respond to it. They've got long essays. They've got two-part multiple choice, and I saved the two at the top for last. So math, you know, is my favorite. So on the math assessment, and Paul, I remember you talking and during Goal One where you attempted to take an SBA online and, you know, just maneuvering the system. I will tell you on that equation numeric, just having kids understand how to navigate entering in a fraction using that keyboard, putting in an exponent. Like, you can't do that for the first time when it's the SBA, you know, it's race day time, like, you, you can't. The complexity on using the graphing commands, because kids will have to graph a line, or they've got to connect stuff to make a geometric figure, like, it's not, I would never want to approach that test on, for the first time, never having experimented with that. So one thing that is so incredible about our district is we have a tech levy. Every student has a Chromebook, so we actually can have our students practice in the same format in which they're going to be expected to perform. So I just am so grateful that we, we have that for our students. Right, now it's going to be your turn. So you get to imagine that you are a third or fourth grade student. So in front of you, there is a, right, or I know that little sign, there's this bright orange newspaper. And Sarah has them that she's passing out to people in the And Sarah has them that she's passing out to people in the audience. And I wanna make sure that Kevin and um Deb have access. They were sent a link. And you don't have to worry because you're not going to be expected to answer the questions. So I'm gonna lighten the load a little bit for you. So here's what I want you to do. Want you to imagine you're a third, fourth grade student, you're sitting down at the computer. And I want you to take a look at this and you're gonna read it, give you a second to read it, then you can work with your partner. And here's what we're asking. When you look at this, imagine you're that student. What are the skills, the knowledge, the strategies, right? Because this looks a whole lot different. This is a one point question, by the way, one point. This is a whole lot different than what we did when we were students. So I'm gonna give you a minute, look it over, then we're gonna talk with your partner, then we're gonna talk about what are the things you notice about this that would be, you know? What would be difficult for a student? You know, what's, you know, how how would I teach them to have perseverance in answering a question like this? Okay, you ready? All right. Third or fourth grade, yeah. The little boxes are hard to see. Can you tell that there's six answer choices down there? Okay. You don't have to answer it. I think you're, I think I have to. Should we? I'm gonna make everyone out there answer. Hey, feel free, feel free to talk to your partner. What do you think, what do you think students would need to do in order to answer this question? Okay, you don't have to answer. Go ahead, Paul, you're gonna say something.
Yeah, I think they did. Uh, note paper, because there's no way I could keep and juggle all this in my mind if it was on a.
Okay.
A screen unless I had my mouse, I could make notes, like click.
Okay.
I I just put a, you know. A little dot, I didn't fully check it, I'm still thinking about it, so I put a little dot.
Uh huh.
So, yeah, I would have a difficult time checking.
Some type of scratch paper?
Yeah, I'd have a tough time on a. Uh, a computer if I could write down some stuff to make notes.
What else did you notice about it?
Like a decent reader.
A decent reader. There's a lot of reading and and that's, that's important because this is one question, one. Like, I want you to imagine the perseverance that it takes. If this is one question, this is a one point question.
Make questions around this test.
Um, so there's uh forty three in each claim.
Yeah, depends on the grade level. It varies. The S B A actually gives us a blueprint, so we know how many that you get like a range of how many questions, so, but.
How much time do they have to take you?
Unlimited. They kind of give us an estimate of how long it takes, but there's no time limit for students, so they can take as long as they want to. Because you think good read, there's a lot there. Perseverance is huge.
I've got a strategy I can implore on this.
What do you have, Kevin?
Oh, I think the first thing I do is I go through the. The first underlying one and I go down to the answers and I would. Look at the ones that I could automatically eliminate as not very creative. Um, and take those off the list mentally. And focus on a couple that I think. Are the most creative for that first one. And then I would look at the second underline. And cross reference that with. Um, eliminating any that aren't. Very descriptive there and that way I narrow it down to a couple that I could choose from and then select on.
Yeah, so think about that as a classroom teacher, right? So if I'm giving this as a a practice question right in my classroom. I could teach my kids a strategy, right? Well, first of all, like everybody, you said they have people to access the reading. They have to be able to, they comprehend what this is and can they make inferences, but then Kevin's strategy applies, right? How would I tackle it in a methodical way? Because if you notice, it tells the students there's select two, right? Select two of the choices. And both of those two have to be marked correctly in order to get it right. Are you gonna say something, Rick?
And these are third graders?
Mm-hmm, this is third or fourth. It is, it was in a practice grouping, so it didn't tell me the exact grade, but yeah, third, fourth grade. So that's a, right, that's, yep. And as in the O S P I tries to come up with questions that um. Aren't reliant on student background, but that bias piece, it still comes into play. And so you'll notice it um in different questions, different like real world based scenarios that they give.
Or if you don't have a dad or.
I would think along with what Kevin said, for strategies on how to eliminate and pick the, you know. Narrow it down. I would, I would think the teacher would also have to teach them mental strategies if they didn't have a notepad.
Oh, right.
Or something to, I I I did the same strategy Kevin did, but. I had a notepad to kind of, you know, to help me keep track of which ones are already eliminated.
Well, you had an advantage. So your advantage is that you saw it on one piece of paper. Do you think that this fits on one screen of the computer? So the students are having to scroll to see everything. So imagine that they're not scrolling down far enough to see all of the answer choices. So there's things like that even where us having Chromebooks and allowing kids to practice online is even more important. So. Are you ready for the correct answers?
Sure.
It is number two and number five. How'd you do?
What would you answer? You said don't answer.
Oh. I thought maybe you'd wanna know like what they are. Rick on it. So um, we haven't.
I got, I got one.
She felt annoyed.
She felt annoyed?
That suggests one.
Yeah, I got one and five.
So now we're gonna challenge O S P I. Oh, okay, well.
Let's get Chris on the phone.
Yeah. The challenge.
I, no, they said it's coming back.
I have one and five.
Is it one and five?
Maybe it isn't one five.
It is one and five.
Be a typo.
So I did one and five, well.
Okay, B two, one and five. Deb, did you wanna share something?
She said one and five.
One and five?
Yeah.
So um there on your table, there's also um a a really bright lime green one. It's a math example. This is the sixth grade math. We will take you through um the horror and doing a math one, but um again, like later, if you wanna take a peek at it and see what students um are expected to do, but um.
What's?
We need to know like.
Yeah, a question about this. Do they, for the math one, can, is there a button that they would, this would be read to them?
Yes, so that's, so um Kathleen in our assessment department, she knows all of the tips and tricks and we can assign different accommodations to different students. So yes, there are, there are things that we can assign to students.
But I caught like. If I was just a. Student taking this.
For every single student, I don't know that.
Like, the first word is electrician.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
So again, like what's an electrician?
And this is a math.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not necessarily something that would be. Read.
I don't think just.
No.
Yeah.
Not necessarily need to be part of an accommodation.
Jen doesn't read, no, right?
No, it doesn't, but they do have um for words like electrician, it might have a very slight underline. And that slight underline would indicate that they can click on it and edit it.
For certain words, though. Okay. And then this particular question on the math test only, um, there's a portion of the test that there's no calculator. And then there's a portion with a calculator. So like on this math question, you notice it's dealing with money. And so students would need to be able to perform decimal operations in order to get this question correct as well. So that's another thing for students in that perseverance, so. So um. One of the things that we like to think about with the S B A, we talk about task critics performance. We have a little picture of, you know. Somebody running a race, wants you to think about a marathon, right? So if you were training for a marathon, you're not going to go out there on race day and then attempt to run this marathon. Almost. Most sane people wouldn't do that, right? You've got lots of time and energy into planning and prepping. You're learning what the track is. You might be doing, you know. You're running three miles today and then maybe you're working up to five, you're working up to seven. It's about nutrition, it's about sleep. And the same thing is that way for the eh for the smarter balanced assessment. We have to take the guesswork, we have to plan just like a coach would plan. To get our students ready because the task we're asking them to do is to perform on that S B A. So up top, the the first things are just some, some things that teachers are doing. So. A formative assessment are those tiny little things in a classroom. It's even me giving this to a student in a paper format and us tackling this. How would I tackle this? How do I persevere? What are some ticks, tips and tricks? And then you're building up and then we also have um more questions built into our end of unit assessments. A lot of our new curriculum adoptions of the assessments that come with it now have S B A um like questions or S B A type like questions. Um, sometimes we're writing them ourselves. And then again, all of that data we're we're, you know, looking at in our P L Cs to see how our students perform. Because if we're not looking and doing this all year long, there's no way they're performing on 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 S B A day when they're sitting for over two hours. Taking just the E L A portion. So, um, and then the smarter balance gives us some online access. And so they have these different things. There's an interim comprehensive assessment, an interim, there's I A Bs, I. C As, blah, blah, blah. And there's a shorter and longer, but those are actual online versions where students can get in. And then they're actually prac- uh practicing in that format. And so when you look back at school improvement plans, you'll see that principals have included lots of this type of work. Um, in some of the action steps that they have. So. In front of you, there's a a bigger packet. And we just took some snapshots of some questions, so you can take a peek and you'll see the different. Question types, you might notice some, you know, drag and drops or whatever, and you can look at that later, you know, in your leisure. And then we'll work with Charmaine too and we'll get you a link. Where if you're bored this weekend, you too can log in and answer lots of, you can choose to be a third grader and eighth grader. Answer as many E L A and math questions as you would like. So, um, we'll get that out to you.
What grade?
Oh, yes, oh. Yes, okay, so now. That one, that's sixth grade math, and that's no calculator. So what we have for you, that's gonna pass them out. You get your own race day bib because you just completed your first S B A question and you get your little um. Nutrition bar because you know, all athletes need to have a good, good breakfast, a good snack before they perform, so. Well, maybe that, that could have been like my, my typo of cutting and pasting, so I I apologize there. But that, that gives you an idea, like just one question.
Yes. I didn't, to try to take it on the computer. Like, it was like. Whoa, give me a Scantron name.
Yeah, I I really appreciated and connected with the insight that you made about that during goal one because it is what we're asking students to do, like it's. Everybody needs to experience what that looks like. It's it's not the, it's not the, you know, that old day test where that bar has been raised for students like significantly.
Well, and then, you know, you hear criticism sometimes, but while you're teaching kids to. Teaching, yeah, how to take a test. But those are real life skills. You're gonna.
True.
Use that and work when you get out there.
Right, yeah, true. All right, so Steve, back to you.
All right, so next question, um, how will we respond if we don't get there? And uh so kind of to take our minds back a little bit to what we talked earlier to. Uh, with the instructional core, the secret sauce, um, doing work that is a research base uh to. Prepare them to demonstrate their mastery of standards. Um. So what we're gonna talk just a little bit about air, you know, some of the work that we do um. To intervene interventions that we have in place, elementary and middle school. And um, you know, all school, all all students are general ed students first. And then, but also within our intervention classes, we're also providing that opportunity to reach our special ed students who. Um, are struggling with those uh grade level standards or low income or multilingual students as well. Um. We shared this the other day with our community leaders and uh so just. What, we tried to kind of represent, um, it it's different, I mean. Pretty obvious statement, very different elementary to uh secondary in terms of the structure of the day. So what can be accomplished i- in an elementary day where students maybe, you know, perhaps uh primarily with one teacher. Uh, versus a secondary where you have a six period schedule, trying to create opportunities. For students to get that second dose uh learning, um, it just, it looks different. In the middle, you'll see, you know, lots of similarities. What are we doing to identify the students, get the data, the best data possible? Um, the para support that we have um is a great um asset across, you know, the elementary and the secondary schools. Um. I'll talk first about the secondary, but we've uh talked previously to you about um interventions that we have that might. Be geared toward students that are maybe a year or two behind. Or separate interventions that are uh structured for students who might be three or more years behind. Um, trying to collect the data multiple times throughout the year. Um. Now, ha- you know, having the instructional services, T O S S, who are able to get out uh. To the schools, be able to uh participate and support the tracking of the data. Um, teachers and the administrators that participate in the uh data cycles regularly throughout the school year.
Right, and uh. And as Steve said, the differences, and we talked a little bit about this before. Some of the, you know, research based curriculum that we're using um in uh elementary and in secondary. The assessments that we're using, um, again. Different assessments, but three times a year. Um, the kind of support that we have, we we talked about win time, if you remember before in elementary, which we use uh K through five. And then that whole idea of the P L C team. One of the great things that we have at both elementary and secondary is this T O S A piece, this is newer for. Um, uh Steve's side this year, but boy, has been awesome with regards to the data. That we're able to take back, analyze, not just with um ourselves, but with principals and then with the teachers to be able to really dig in. Deeper into how we can then turn around and um change our instruction or intervene with our kids in different. At at deeper levels.
Yeah, I just had Kara Wilson up. Doing some P D with uh Lakridge staff the other day. We'll be back up there next week. Um, one last thing I just wanna say, kind of again, drawing back to, you know, ensuring that students are known and understood, connecting our families. Yesterday, elementary principals and high school principals are already beginning the work to plan around transitions. And uh, you know, it's, it starts really in January with the showcases, but that work is ongoing. And then all the way through the summer where we have to ramp up opportunities for students transitioning. Fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. So, so that work is already be begun. Um, and um, again, should try to connect with our families. It's been a little while, maybe about a year, but um I came to you last uh. Last year and presented on the interventions that we have in place, um, particularly at our middle schools. Where our students have an opportunity to maybe be in a system forty four, read one eighty or R ready class. Um. We literally just got um done with our second round of diagnostic, um. Uh. It's the reading intervention, but it's a diagnostic test for our um. Uh, reading intervention classes and you'll see through the um. You can see. Pardon me. From the zero line, you can see where the students uh started out and um. Some of our students, their scores did go down. And in some cases, we've got some students that, quite honestly, we need to reengage. And um show them kind of like the the merit or their reason why if they perform well on the test, you know. Um, give that effort, but um, but we had a lot of students who showed tremendous growth, so um. You know, if you look at the dotted line, um, you'll see that um students, there are plenty of students who showed um around that. One semester worth of growth. We've got. Many students who have exceeded that, have already shown a years worth of growth, but again, we're also working with students who are multiple years behind. Um, just sat down with Jenny Williams yesterday and we were talking about, we've got students who were transitioned out of intervention. At the semester, some students that, you know, are transitioning in. Uh, one of the important things that we, we just need to remember, particularly at the secondary is when the students are in an introductory class, what are they not? Taking, what are they not getting access to? And typically that is an encore class. So there's something else in that school day. That uh the students aren't getting access to. And for some kids, you know, it might be just a real motivation or um. You know, bonus if they do get an opportunity to exit out of intervention and take those other classes. Um. All right, so gotta, gotta video, two videos to share with you. Um. I'll show you this first one. So we got the teacher up a mountain view. Yeah. Uh, no, there's nothing to be here on this one. So it was just a quick video. So if you didn't see in the video, since some dynamics I want to note. First of all, small class size. Okay, so we've got students that are working with a teacher in a small group. Students that are engaged, eh, we had in the um far right, you can see there, we had some students that were also engaged in some independent work. And then when the the camera panned off to the right, you got to see that second teacher in the classroom, the parent educator. Who was working with an additional uh group, providing some support and guiding practice. Um, and so um. Um, and so um, one of, one other um, angle on this that you won't, you haven't seen here. But it's also, we have multilingual students who might be um, also be getting um, kind of their um, instruction. Through an intervention class with an EL um, par educator that's also provided for um, students. Um, so again, oh pardon, I need to go down here to advance it. Alright, so again, this is just kind of a handout, uh, look at that classroom for you to see. Uh, second classroom right here. And I'll just uh, say, as we're watching it. So one of the things that, you know, if we zoom in on the instructor, it's like, uh, this is Patty Berger's classroom over at uh, Southern Middle School. Um, you, you've got a teacher who knows each of their uh, students, small group instruction. Uh, you've got, students can't hide in a setting like this, right? Um, your, the engagement is always gonna be increased, the participation from the students, always gonna be increased. Honestly, in a setting like this, students are able to relax more. They're um, you know, they're, they're in a classroom where it's more kind of homogenous. They're able to, you know, work on perhaps similar skills to their peers. Um, they kind of know where one another's at, possibly provide, you know, support to each other as they're working through um. Classrooms uh, like that. This does not just happen, I mean, the, the work that's going in on the end of the administration and the counselors and then the teachers. To identify those students, the staffing that's being provided to the schools to allow for a small class size like this. While the remainder of the cla- classes are, you know, in sections throughout the school. Again, it's all part of that staffing equation and uh, the work that goes into, sorry. The scheduling. Alright, I'm just gonna get all of these bullets. One more, there we go. Okay, so, so what's working well? You can see we've got quite a list here. Um, really, there's, there really is a lot of stuff that has been going on. Um, the fourth bullet down, principal data meetings at elementary and secondary level. Um, you know, I have to give credit to Beth and the elementary principals, they started last year having uh, monthly data meetings. It kind of gave us a little bit of a charge uh, to follow. And so this year, middle school and high school principals likewise. Um, Chris Turner has been monitoring and providing data for principals every two weeks on, um, you know, like the classroom grades. Emphasis on the ninth grade, um, I'm sure he'll be touching on that in a um, presentation to come. Um, the, again, I talked about the allocating the funding for par educators to support intervention classes. This, this is a real investment in this. Uh, we talked a little earlier about curriculum frameworks. Uh, having spent apart, having a director who is now focused on instruction. Another key connection partnership that were um, that we can, you know, developing, grow. Alright. Okay, uh, so what are some opportunities for improvement? And we, and we've got a lot, um. You know, we are, we're coming uh, out of COVID, we're not totally, you know, done with the effects by any means. Uh, but getting back and strengthening that um, connections with the families, um, middle school conferences. You know, we were talking yesterday with high schools about what might we be able to do with the conference structure as well. Um, we've worked with teachers around the co-teaching delivery model, and special education delivery model in general is an ongoing conversation. Um, Beth talked about the elementary flexibility and the what I need. Um, intervention time, middle school and high school aren't as flexible. So what can we do? How can we change things? You know, Lori challenges us to be innovative in our thinking. So um, so, so where can we take that? And um, you know, as we talked about with the last one, ensuring that we're incorporating the high DOK questions and test-taking strategies. Again, task predicts performance.
Right, so it takes us to the end. So we start with a promise, and we need to end with a promise. And so when we're looking at this work, it's really going back through those four guiding questions. And it's like, we need to know every one of our students, you know, who they are, what are their strengths, you know, where, what else do they need? It's valuing them for who they are and what they bring to our schools and our classrooms every single day, and then supporting them where they are. So that we're giving them everything they need, because what it is all about is getting them to that stage where they can walk across. And then just move on to the next step in their life where they can just pursue those dreams. And so we just, we, I think, feel like we have our promise on everything now, and it's just that aspirational thing that just gives you that, you know, that energy. To come to work every day, because this is really what it's about. So with that, um, we were um, just thankful that you've given us this time to share work around goal three, and we're happy to answer questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions here or Deb?
Oh, make a little light-hearted comment. That was, that last time I was back in Porpoise, I was back there taking care of much of my mom's stuff. And I found my third grade report card. And let me tell you, I couldn't have done what you got here in third grade. And my grades weren't that good, I'll tell you that, but uh, I did pass everything, but uh, I, I am. When I, for a third grader to do this on the computer like you're saying. And you gotta be focused, you gotta be, I mean, on target that day, that's dope. If you guys can get these kids to pass all this and do good. I commend you for the job.
Thank you, we're trying.
The teachers.
The teachers, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions, I'll ask one, and we'll go back around. The first one, it's kind of maybe more of a clarifying question on that uh, semester one growth report. Yeah, chart here.
Yeah.
Was this just the, is this the whole grade or is this an intervention?
Uh, people. It's a variety of grades, quite honestly. It's uh, so it's a sampling of all the sixth through eighth grade. Uh, students that we have in reading intervention right now.
Okay, yeah.
So it's reading intervention for a couple of grades, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of years back when they did a data, I remember there are students who, like, they'll take the test, like, when you see negative growth. Sometimes it's a kid who's just, you know, blew off the test because you, you shouldn't be going backwards, you know, like it's. Yeah, so it's like looking at the data, and why does a student perform? So like, some of those, you have to go student by student and go, hmm, that's interesting, Paul. Why were you here and now you're there? And so those are like, where individual teachers are like, you know, come on kiddo.
Yeah, usually if you know the student, you're, something's going on at home or, you know.
And that's work that Karen Catherine has been doing, is reaching out to the teachers and saying, hey, listen, you know, with this score. And we can go in and reset and give that student an opportunity to take it again. And in some cases, they'll do it, in other cases, it's not the right time, so there's a reason why.
But no, okay, that helps me understand what I'm seeing, because honestly, when I saw it, I thought, that's horrible.
Yeah, in some cases, there are.
But, I mean, I see a couple of bright spots where it looks like one guy went up, or that one student went up uh, like over two hundred fifty. Uh, what do they call it, Lexi?
Lexos, first.
Yeah, points, yeah. Incredible. And then you see, yeah, the kids drop, so I'm glad, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, and then you can come back to me on the other.
Uh, let's check in with Deb or Kevin, do you have any questions?
I'm all good, great presentation, I love the data, thank you.
I'm good too, um, I appreciate the hard work here and um, man, I'm, I'm, I'm glad I'm out of school. That's all I can say. And I went to Catholic school with those nuns. Thank you.
Alright, the other, I'll start with a comment, a real kudos to you guys. I really liked the slide where you had uh, kind of a step-by-step year for year, you're gonna move the second graders. You, you have a plan to get to the eighty percent. I've seen enough presentations from your team to realize that you guys dig into the data, identify the classroom. Down to the student and the teacher, so I think you can meet those step-by-step goals, and I like that, but that was a great. A, a great slide in those presentations. Okay, last clarifying question, on these uh, standards, are the frameworks? I, I thought these frameworks gave them OSPI, but then it seemed like you indicated that we do them locally, or your team does them locally. We do, okay.
Yeah, and, and for example, like that format, I would say, is not the format you're gonna see on the US sister. I think every time we do it, it gets better and better. Some of them, I mean, Kelly's been at it much longer than me, but some of them, it's just like that, well, that was the first format. Um, but now, they've kind of changed as, you know, the teachers who come together. Kinda experience, have experience and say, actually, this is really what's gonna serve, you know, my work in the classroom the best.
The frameworks, it's really like the way that I think about it, it's that blueprint, right? Where we keep every third grade teacher doing the same thing across the district, and you know, every, every classroom, every school. Not that a teacher isn't going to differentiate or, you know, make adjustments for their, their own classroom. But it's based on, you know, the curriculum that we purchased, you know, what we feel is important. What are the supplements we need to add in that aren't necessarily in the curriculum, so um.
One of the things, Paul, like, like, last year, again, I'll go back to your sister, because it's recent, but, you know, when we look at the list of standards. You know, and we've talked about this before, I mean, it's like, how many years would it take to truly get through all the standards? So then, so then the work becomes, what are the priority standards? And then, so then the frameworks are our vehicle to make sure we're reminding ourselves, what were the priority standards? Now we've adopted a text, and sometimes when you look at what's put into the text, it's very ambitious. So what they think might be done in five minutes, you look and say, there's no way. So then we have to go through the, the resource and say, okay, from here, what is the greatest leverage? You know, activity or whatever that we want to incorporate in the framework. And then if time allows, go back and do some other things, but these are the ones we're gonna say are the must-dos, if you will. And so then that's kind of the structure um, that we try to build with rooms.
It's almost the same, I'm glad you said that, Steve. You basically almost said the exact same thing a teacher told me uh, yesterday. When I picked up, it was for fifth grade curriculum, they have all the curriculum out, it was amazing. And I asked her, the teacher, I said, uh, how much of this book do you get through? She goes, oh, a fraction. We get through a fraction of all these books, and then she pulled out her framework. Right, but again, I thought it was from OSBI. And she handed me the frameworks, and she said, I use that framework, and then I use all the curriculum here, and I have to pick and choose to meet those frameworks.
Yeah.
So, uh, thanks for the clarification, yeah, I should, and I'm glad you drilled it into the teachers too, so.
You know, when Paul brought up those, each year, you had a little bit of, each year was like a five percent increase. Is there a reason why you picked that, or is it just?
We just literally went from point eight to eighty percent and then averaged it over the years and said, you know, so it was even growth. Then what would it take to arrive at eighty percent? Yeah.
It's my man's students.
Yes, yes.
Sure, then the electrician one.
I know, we still good.
I think I got one of them.
Don't forget, we're hiring for an electrician.
Yeah, one thing, once you mention that, though, like, one, one of the things you'll notice between the third grade one and the sixth grade one is on the third grade. They tell the student that there's two choices that are correct. They don't do that on sixth grade, they stop that, you, it just says, select all of the combinations. So that's one of the things, as you see through the grade levels, they stop with that. So a sixth grader has no idea whether there's two out of those, you know, five or six choices, whether there's three. And that one, there's three correct answers, and you have to have all three of them to get one, to get one point. And that, that's a, that's a small, these are both small marble questions. When Beth was doing small, you know, the small, moderate, difficult, these are small marbles. You didn't get a big marble. But in your packet, there could be some big marbles, and online, you'll have.
Go online.
Yes.
That's the balance between the depth of knowledge and self-esteem or social emotional.
Yeah.
Safety of learning.
Very true, yeah, very true.
A little bit of.
Thank you. It's a great presentation. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. For discussion, that's next. Does anybody have anything?
I can discuss.
Present for discussion?
No, not for me.
Paul?
No.
Kevin?
All good, thank you.
You, Deb?
I'm good too.
Right, there you go. Well, I guess, that's it, right? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn, and at this time, um, we will hold an executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation, potential litigation. Actually, it's not anticipated following the executive session, and it's about approximately, you know, a little. Well, let's give it an hour. An hour, alright.